Today is six o'clock on this day, the twenty ninth day of March, twenty twenty-three, and I call this meeting of Laredo College Trustees to order. If I can have Mr. Delgado with the prayer and Mr. Martinez with the pledge of allegiance, please, please rise.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for our faculty, staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us you community to always seek your will in all that we do and in all that we say. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Levin Ramos, could you please roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Lupita Sepeda?
Present.
Jorge G. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present.
Erica Benavidez Garcia?
Present.
Senri Viendo?
Present.
Mercilio Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Absent.
Karina Elizondo?
Absent.
Tita Cantubena?
Absent.
You have a quorum, ma'am. Thank you. At the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item that I have is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-third, special board meeting of March second, twenty twenty-third, and board retreat of March fourth, twenty twenty-third.
I have a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mrs. Jackie Levin Ramos and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion, none heard, all in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item I have is public testimony. Do we have anybody?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, any comments at this time?
The chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
I know this is not at all in the minutes of our meeting, but I think it is very, very important that we give proper recognition not only to Dr. Ramirez, and of course headed by our president of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Peta, but the event that was held this Saturday, recognizing the seventy-fifth anniversary of Laredo College was an incredible success. The turnout was even far beyond what was expected, and in particular more so the tremendous amount of endorsement and support that it was quite obvious. We have to thank not only the two organizations that provided the diamond, shall I call it, roundup for the success of this exceptional, exceptional anniversary celebration of Laredo College. And that is, I have reference to of course the Killen Foundation or the, which is Bradley Killen, as well as the P and C Banks, but all of the other sponsors. And one thing that is also very, very obvious, the tremendous amount of research and homework that was done not only by Dr. Ramirez but for administrative staff and the different committees. This is an exceptional and highly, highly impressive document that was actually very much part of the event, if I may call it that. And this is just one, one example of all of the administrators that actually were presidents of the institution, but also their individual's success within, okay, within their period of the presidency. And then all of these documentation in addition to the fact that also recognizing the sponsors. The success is in our, in my own humble opinion, exceeded all expectations. And what is even more so, it became quite evident because it is my understanding at the latter part of the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration, we had two individuals that do have talent recognition and as well as musical compositions, and we're talking about Mr. Pitas of the EU as well as Mr. Minister Swisher. The, where the entire, the entire participants that were there ended up in the dance floor and really celebrating it all up until the tail end, which went one hour beyond what was actually paid for by the orchestra itself. So again, Dr. Ramirez, I compliment you and I congratulate you as well as your administrative staff and all the members of this committee, okay, which of course was led by Ms. Peta. But without exception, it was an incredible success and I do congratulate you for it. And I believe I'm speaking in behalf of all the members of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I want to go to the next item number five before Mr. Muir. Is that something? No? Are we okay? Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel, he's joined our meeting. So the next item is number five, recognition, introduction of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. Five A is Talent Strong Texas Pathways Award. Dr. Madi Salado, the A.C. Hina.
Good evening, Madi Salado, the A.C. Hina, Provo's Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'm very proud to say that Laredo College has been selected to participate in the Talent Strong Texas Pathway. The sixteen million dollar, five-year statewide economic mobility grant was administered by the Texas Success Center. Only a few selected colleges were able to participate in this grant, and Laredo College was one of them. We will be receiving sixty thousand dollars per year in a time span of five years. And the results of the colleges that will be participating will direct us into establishing program that will be intentional with short-term credentials and early workplace learning to meaningful employment, to further workforce and transfer education attainment. Some of the things that we'll gain from it is for our staff to participate in the Pathway Institute. Some of y'all were familiar with the Board Institute that was attended last year. So it will pay for travel for any board members that are interested in going in the Board Institute given by the Texas Success Center, and a lot of resources that we'll gain. But on the LC side, we want to target the Global Import/Export and Logistics Center because we understand that Laredo, we're in the hub of all the international mobility, right, and economic mobility that's going on. So some of the things that we're going to facilitate is the development of short-term and long-term credentials as well as transfer opportunities. We want to strengthen and continue strengthening, make it bigger. We have a lot of community partners that make them a community partner for Laredo College. And most importantly, we want to focus on creating exponential labs that will enhance real-life application pertaining to the areas of import, export, and logistics, and ultimately create incubators that community members and students can utilize.
Congratulations. Chair recognizes Karina Elizondo, has joined us in the board meeting. Welcome. Thank you. Awesome, Hughes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Well deserved for everybody that worked on it. Thank you. Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Well, just to add to that, this is a huge accomplishment for our college and the recognition that we're going to get because of it. But there is a conference that we will be attending in April, and there is a whole team of us that are going, and hopefully by the time we come back, we'll have finished all of this work. That's not true, but at least we'll have the, at least we'll have the framework and have laid the groundwork with some guidance from the other colleges that are attending. So we're really excited about it. And hopefully, as we meet the demands and the expectations of not only the coordinating board but of the governor's office, we'll continue to get continued financial support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to go to the next item, five B, introduction of personnel, personnel actions. Dr. Madi Salado, the A.C.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. We have a few promotions and we have, if you recall in the last board meeting last month, we did a little bit of reorganization and restructuring. And so tonight I bring forward some promotions for a few people. And so I'd like to recognize the new chairperson for the Behavioral Science Department, and that's Pablo A. Martinez. Also chair of our Culinary Arts Department, Ms. Christina Perez. We have also chair of the Department of English and Communications, Renee J. Montemayor. And I have been working on a couple of other projects as well, so thank you, thank you for agreeing with me. And the journeyman electrician, Mr. Enrico Bonner III. And last but not least, and she couldn't be with us tonight, but in the Protective Services Department as chair is Brianna Bonsa. She's teaching tonight, so she couldn't join us. But those are our changes and additions for this, for this month.
Thank you. Congratulations. Are we going to take a picture? No? Yes?
We can. Yes, absolutely.
But before the picture, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Villa has joined our board meeting as well. We are soon.
Thank you. Are we ready for a picture with our new employees? Please, please join us.
Next item is number six, the Faculty Senate Report. Mr. Ashman DeHany.
Good evening, good evening, board members. College, Madam President, as well as administration staff and faculty and students, I'd like to give the board a short update on matters concerning faculty that I also met earlier today with Dr. Ramirez to talk about some of these issues. And so just a couple of items that we have here, I wanted to mention that the Faculty Senate, for the record, for Cashman and DeHany, President of the Faculty Senate, a professor of government. One of the items we're working on is the retirement luncheon. Y'all heard me talk about that before, specifically for the faculty. And we have a number, I just want to talk about what are we going to do on May the fifth? We are going to recognize those faculty that are retiring this semester. My understanding is we're going to have a few. And then we have a couple of faculty that have retired over the last couple of years. And with the pandemic, I think that it might have been passed up or not noted, you know, not noticed or not memorialized. So we want to recognize them as well. And we've also had, I know personally, faculty that have died or passed away, excuse me, over the last couple of years. And we'd like to take a moment to recognize them as well. If anything, a moment of silence for their contributions to our students and to our community and to our college, obviously. So that's one thing coming up May fifth. We'll talk more about that in the days to come. Another issue that I wanted to mention, and this is an item that's coming out of the president's office, which is something that she challenged us to get involved with, and we talked about that a few days ago, which is the endeavor that I'm trying to bring more faculty as well as more employees on. We talked about it today, which is the Relay for Life Cancer Walk. And we are proud to announce that under Dr. Ramirez's leadership, we came up with a name for cancer relay for life walk, and it's going to be called the Laredo College Legacy Warriors. And the event is scheduled for, yeah, I think it's awesome. And it's scheduled for April twenty-first. So there's going to be a lot of work. I'm going to do everything I can with Associate Vice President Andrea Lopez, who's also co-sharing that endeavor. And so our hope is to get many more people involved. So we'd like to continue to share information with you all about that as is needed so that perhaps you can look into that for yourself as well. The other item I wanted to mention very briefly is the election update. The last time I came here and spoke to you, I mentioned that the Faculty Senate is looking for, is looking to elect new leaders, and that's part of our constitution. We have the terms and the limits. And so for this particular round of elections, we are looking for a new president, a new secretary of the Faculty Senate, as well as a couple senators at large that represent, rather than a specific academic department like social sciences, they represent the entire college. Those are our enlarged senators. That was scheduled to occur from until today, and Monday was when the elections were going to begin. So you know, I'm using the words when. There's a slight delay, and that's just that we opened up nominations so that we can get even more participation and more candidates for our elections. So we've just moved that up to April eleventh. So April fourteenth is our hope that at our next regular meeting of the Faculty Senate, we will be swearing in and ratifying the results of the election held in the second week of April for our next president, our next secretary, and our new enlarged senators, along with departments of the active senators too. So those are just a couple of the items, which means I remain president for a few more days, but it doesn't change, just by a few days only. It doesn't change this, that this will be my last address to the faculty, sorry, to the Board of Trustees, offering the Faculty Senate report. I've provided at least close to about over eighty of these reports over the last years. And as I reflect back on those years, it's not just the issues that we've worked with, it's the people that we've worked with and what we've been able to accomplish together. There are times when we've agreed, there's times when we disagreed, but the amount of respect that I have for everyone in front of me, everyone behind me, and to my side has only grown immensely over that time because all the things we're able to accomplish despite our differences, despite our disagreements. Let me just put it this way, despite our disagreements, these are people who will pick you up off the road and take you home and make sure you get home. As it happens with your importance. And so in conclusion, I'd like to just say, over the years of being the Faculty Senate President, we've gotten to work with board members coming in through our, you know, debates as well as our forums. In other words, getting to work on different ad hoc committees. We did the committees over the years, including the Presidential Search Committee, not just one, but a couple of those. And every single president, and I talked to Dr. Ramirez about this earlier today, that has been here, I have felt the need to support them. And I've had the honor and pleasure of working with President Ramirez over the last year or so with former interim president Dr. Lebrusca DeGaleena, prior to that, Dr. Ricardo Solis, and then prior to that, Dr. Malonado, who I worked with as a student under the Vice President's office. And I was telling Dr. Ramirez today that with each of those presidents, you would find me right here at that podium, speaking up for them and defending them because, as I said before, and board members will remember, and I said this to Dr. Ramirez today, we are one ship and the president is our captain. And we may not always agree on what paddles we're going to use, but where we're going, we have to go together. And so I am here at the end of the term of presidency, honored to have been, that I can say that I stood by each of our presidents, I don't want to say mine, but our presidents. And because I won't do this as president later, I just want to speak on behalf of the president and just say it's been a fantastic job working with you as president of the Faculty Senate over the last year. And I know I say that on behalf of all the faculty when I say that. And the issues again that we worked on have been tremendous. We've accomplished so much at this college. We went from being a two-year to a four-year institution. I'm not saying this, but I'm saying because of what we've done together and what our faculty and our administration and our staff have been able to accomplish together. And so as this is my last report on behalf of the Faculty Senate and behalf of the Faculty Assembly, I want to say it has been a distinct pleasure, a distinct honor to work alongside all of you on all of the goals that we have achieved. We are where we are today, I believe, because of all of us in this room and other people who are not here today. Y'all are tremendously amazing people. The work that you all do as board members that is not compensated is incredibly valuable to the community and to the college and to the longevity and success and continuity of the college that we all work in up. And so thank you all from the faculty for the work that you all do. And so thank you all from the faculty for the work that you all do. I know, and this is the end, that I'll say, I know it's easy to ask for things all the time, but it's a lot harder to be part of the solution of finding out how to provide what has been asked. And fortunately, that's taught me a lot. My next role as interim chair of the Social Sciences Department, Government, Geography, Philosophy, and History, I think is going to be relying on all of the experiences I learned as the Faculty Senate Chair or President. And I think that can help me hopefully do a great job. And my hope is to become the full-term chair of that department in the days ahead that should come to pass. And so with that said, I'd like to again thank everyone for the opportunity to speak with you, to work with you, and to do what we can to better this college. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cash. The chair recognizes Dr. Ramidis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Cash, for, for your leadership and for your continued work on Faculty Senate and, and just for all your support and all your help. And now, again, thanking you for taking on the interim chair. And when the provost, Rodriguez de Gueina, asked you, you immediately said yes, and there was no hesitation. And the only caveat was you're going to have to leave Faculty Senate. And he said, it's time anyway. So, and I think, you know, you grow and you get ready for the next step. And I do believe that, that Cash is working towards the next step and next part of his career, professional career. And, and so we're very fortunate to have someone with this kind of dedication and this kind of, of continued foresight and, and, and support for our students and, and what our entire faculty is trying to accomplish and do. And, and I have to tell you, that whole Relay for Life thing came out of a phone call that I got. And, and so I sent out an email to just a random group of people on campus and said, anybody interested in taking this on? And he immediately said yes. And then on a separate note, he texts me and said, is it okay if I help you because I can't do it alone? And I said, of course. And so, and very quickly, everybody started jumping in and, and saying yes. And so we've got right now a small team of fifteen. And hopefully that'll continue to grow and we'll be able to represent Laredo College at the Relay for Life with, with a strong show of support and a strong show of, of family to, to, to walk for, for cancer. But that's been every event and every program and project that Faculty Senate has undertaken under Cash's leadership. So Cash, thank you very much. We have a little token for you on behalf of the Board of Trustees and so. I have your certificate.
We're going to want to take a bottom.
Okay.
Thank you again. For your hard work that you did for us. We appreciate it. Chair recognizes Mr. De Nal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cash, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for, for some time now, both as a friend and of course, providing on this level of the board. And I think, you know, I definitely want to express my heartfelt gratitude for your exceptional leadership as Faculty President and Faculty Senate President. You know, your commitment, your hard work, that in most word, your dedication, I think, has significantly contributed to, to the growth and everything that we've, we've been able to accomplish here, just as you stated in, in your statement. So, you know, I, I think your advocacy for faculty development, your vision, I think in most cases, you know, helps shape the role of the college in itself. And for that, I, I thank you wholeheartedly. So congratulations again, wish you all the best in your professional endeavors in the future and of course, you know, helping us out here as always. So thanks again.
Chair recognizes Mrs. De Nal.
I just want to say thank you because you have helped me learn a little bit more of empathy and understanding through your leadership. I gained a greater awareness of the other side of the table, which is the faculty, the staff. And I appreciate that. You and Dr. Bigwell provided that insight for me when I started here at the college. And I saw how well you work with everyone and especially with us and the different endeavors that we undertook. So I appreciate it. I won't say till we see each other again, because we see each other around the corner, because he's my neighbor. So I really appreciate the fact that you served as a well-qualified and a great leader through the Faculty Senate. I appreciate your hard work, continue that advocacy for the faculty and for our beautiful college. Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Sombo.
Thank you. I want to say congratulations. It seems like it was yesterday, twenty years ago, when we took our thirteen oh ones, our twenty three. But it has been an honor just to see you grow and accomplish so many things. And wow, every time you speak, I'm like, this is your speeches on the side. But you're just an amazing human being and a great faculty member and continue doing what you're doing because you are making a difference. And congratulations on your promotion. And hopefully you'll be permanent.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations.
Chair recognizes Mr. De Nal. You're just awesome, okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Next item I have is number seven, Associated Student Organization Report, but I understand all.
No, they're not here today, so we're going to pass on that one.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. We have eight A, February twenty, twenty-third Financial Report. Eight B, Annual Review and Adoption of Laredo College Board Policy. C A K Local, Appropriations and Revenue Sources Investments. Eight C, Approval of Contract and Associated Costs for Movement of P and C Monuments to the Private David V Barkley Cantu Memorial Chapel. Eight D, Approval of Computer Equipment, PCs, Purchase for Campus Computer Labs. We have eight E, Approval for the Purchase of New Chiller Cooling Tower for South Campus. Eight F, Approval of Five-Year, Four-Month Agreement with Technolutions, Inc. for Use of the Slate Customer Relations Software. Eight G, Approval of Regular Scholarship Matching Funds As per Donor Requests.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we formally approve all the items from eight A through eight G. And I would just like to add an additional observation if I may. There's a gentleman who was actually very, very much involved in doing tremendous amount of, of work in getting H C in, in, in the movement of the monuments for Private David V Barkley. And that was a retired Navy officer by the name of Douglas M. Albert. I think we ought to give proper recognition when the time does come to this gentleman because he's the one that initiated all of this work for, and actually did working at it for pretty good enough, over two years. So.
That is my motion. If we can have an amendment just to defer item eight F, it was not discussed in committee.
Okay, so I have a motion on the Consent Agenda to approve eight A, eight B, eight C, eight D, eight E, and eight G. Is that correct?
Second.
That's correct.
And then I have, in addition to the motion to defer eight F by Mr. De Nal. Is that correct?
And a second.
And the eight F to defer was seconded by Mrs. Ramos. All. All in favor?
Hi.
So you have to vote on the motion first.
We have a motion.
I mean, no, on the, the amendment. And then, and then the motion.
Okay, so I have a, a, a first and a second on the eight F. Just all in favor? Any, any discussion? Any, all in favor? Any post, okay, motion carries. So I'm going to go back to the first motion by Mr. Ramidis on the Consent Agenda, which is eight A, eight B, eight C, eight D, eight E, and eight G. So I have a second by Mrs. Ramos.
And.
The second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any post, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Royal, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, that's right. Doctor Ramidis said exactly what he said, two votes on, two motions.
Okay. Next item is Information Items, nine eight, Enrollment Report, Dr. Fred Solis and Ms. Jessica Travina.
Good evening, Madam President, President Ramidis, staff, administrators, friends, colleagues. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment. And?
Jessica Travina, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management.
Tonight, we wanted to update the board in terms of the enrollment activities since the last presentation back in February. First of all, I do want to call attention to that, the fact that our spring second start began on March the twentieth, and that will continue running until May, May the twelfth. Additionally, registration for the Maymester Summer One, Summer Two Sessions began on Monday, March the twenty seventh. Fall Registration also began on March twenty seventh. And as a reminder to all that the fall semester will now consist of two eight-week terms for most of the academic courses. Fall Term Number One will run from August the twenty first through October the thirteenth. And Fall Term Number Two will run from October the sixteenth through December the fifteenth. In terms of the second start, rather than presenting actual enrollment numbers, because the second start just began and we are in the process of certifying our enrollment, I wanted to share with the board how the distribution of the actual courses has gone through for the past couple of second starts that we've had. Going back to spring of twenty twenty-one, when we did the second start there, we had twenty-three courses that were offered solely online. Similarly, in the spring of twenty-two, we, our second start also offered solely online courses. For this spring, though, there's been a different distribution, almost the same number of sections. We have twenty-one that are online, two that are in person or face-to-face, and one that is currently hybrid. For the Maymester, very similar distributions back in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, the Maymester offered twenty-four online sections. Maymester last year offered one, one course that was face-to-face or, or in-person and twenty-three sections that were online. In this Maymester, similarly, the distribution, a little bit different. We have three in-person courses for the Maymester and eighteen that are online. Keep in mind that the Maymester is yet to begin and will actually start at the end of the spring term. As well as for the Summer Session One, I, I do want to point out again the, the distribution of our courses. Back in Summer Session Number One in twenty twenty-one, there were twenty-three in-person courses that were offered, followed by twenty-two that were hybrid and sixty-nine online. I do want to qualify that all of the charts that I'm presenting tonight do not take into consideration the duels, because that's almost scheduled onto itself in the workforce courses as well. So this is purely the academic workforce as once again. For Summer Session One in twenty twenty-two, we had nineteen in-person sections. Sixteen sections were offered on hybrid mode and sixty-eight were online. For this summer, almost the same type of number of courses, the distribution is a little bit different. As you can see, we have just as many in-person courses or face-to-face courses that we do online with a few hybrids still in the mix as well. Similar distribution for Summer Session Two, again, the schedule currently stands back in summer of twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-four sections that were hybrid, followed by six fifty-four online. Again, a reminder, this was the time when we were just coming out of COVID, so that dictated quite a few online sections at the time. For Summer Session Two in twenty twenty-two, a year ago, we had four that were in-person, nineteen that were hybrid, and fifty-eight that were online. For this coming Summer Session Two Term that will begin in July, the distribution is a little bit different than in the past. We'll have thirty-six in-person sections that are currently scheduled with six hybrid and fifty-seven online. Now, keep in mind for the terms that have yet to start, that schedule could still change depending on circumstances and enrollments and so forth. For the Fall twenty twenty-three, the, the way the distribution currently stands in our schedule, for the first part of the Fall Semester, which, which is the first eight-week Fall Term, we have a hundred and fourteen in-person sections, followed by eighty-six hybrid and seventy-one that are online. And then for the second eight-week term, we have ninety-one sections that are in-person, seventy-three hybrid, and seventy-two that are online. And so again, because the, the, these terms are yet to begin, depending on circumstances, there could be still some changes. But as it stands right now, this is what students are available for at this time. And again, I just want to clarify, this, this bar charts do not take into consideration the dual credit courses nor the workforce courses. Those are on different calendars, workforce typically is operated in four-week format. Our, our organizational leadership in a seven-week format is all, so these are critically the academic work classes. Next, I'm going to pass it on then to Ms. Jessica Travina, who will then present to you all the different initiatives that are making this enrollment happen.
Good evening again. I just want to provide you a very quick update on a presentation that we gave earlier in the year as to where we were hoping our goals are in our in-progress situations. I want to report to you that under the Office of Admissions, we've completed some of the projects that we were working on. Right now, actually currently, if you are able or whenever you have a chance to go into our Apply Texas application, which is our admissions application, our online admissions application, you will now see a new look and feel to the distribution of our programs. We are hoping to match that distribution with what we have displayed on our website so that students can make that connection easily. In addition to that, we are outlining the pathway, the high school pathways that students are following in high school so that they also make that connection from high school to the website to the actual admissions application. So that distribution is still there, please note that it is not final. We are continuing to update that as we move forward. We're trying to get things like the alphabetical order, a nicer display, and all of those things happening. It does take a little bit of coding behind the scenes, so we're working on that. In addition to that, we do have redesigned admissions letters ready. We are, um, getting ready to launch those at the end of this, uh, semester. We are hoping to launch those with our incoming class of spring twenty twenty-four. We open the admissions application for them in May, so they will be the first to receive the admissions letters, the newly redesigned admissions letters, and all communication that comes thereafter. With the recruitment annual enrollment team, we do now have an inquiry card available on the website. That was our priority. So if any of you ever co- come across a student that needs to just get additional information, you can send them to our Laredo College website. Right now, it is still housed under admissions and aid recruitment, and it literally says, request more information, click here. They have a fillable form, and our Office of Recruitment gets that information automatically to contact the student. Um, we are hoping that, uh, to avoid many clicks, we're hoping that inquiry card will reside on the main website so that students don't have to go through many clicks to actually get there to request more info. Okay, so that's been completed. We have also completed a a series of preview days. Just today, actually, we had Roma High School join us. So Roma High School was here. We have completed a series of preview days. Preview days are when we bring students on campus to see what we have available for them. So that's happening. In addition to that, reporting, uh, in Argos, uh, Argos is a system we use for reporting. We are creating those and we are moving forward, um, with them. On another note, financial aid, um, financially, award letters have actually already gone out. They were redesigned award letters, easier to understand for the student, very simple, one, two, three steps, one through eight. Um, they have been, uh, uh, mailed already and emailed. We, as of today, have three thousand three hundred and six, um, award letters that we have, uh, issued to students. In addition to that, by the end of the month, which would be Friday technically, we are hoping to launch Scholarship Universe, the external scholarships. So Scholarship Universe is a software that is going to bring all of the scholarships together. We are ready with the external scholarships, not the Laredo College issued ones, but anyone from anywhere that, um, student is gonna apply for. So that'll be coming very soon. We're hoping it'll tie in with our registration season happening. In the assessment.
Thank you, Congress.
Yes, Chair.
The critical issue of Scholarship Universe all being in one place is for our own accreditation and accountability, uh, we need to have one general application and so that students don't have to rot fill out an application for each individual scholarship they want to apply for. There's gonna be one general application within that website so that the students can apply to all the scholarships that are available with one application. So that that's a whole. It is a university in its own, but but that's why it's called Scholarship Universe.
And the idea is once the student completes a profile, if they're not aware of what scholarship to apply to, the system, based on your responses in the profile, can match you to potential scholarships you can qualify. So that should be coming, coming up.
Very good.
And this, and just to keep in mind, the recruitment cycle is an eighteen-month cycle. So you heard her say, we're already talking about next fall. Right? We're already talking about fall twenty twenty-four because that that eighteen-month clock started in January. And so we're already planning for, I know we're still, we're still working on this fall, get me wrong, but but we're already planning for the next one.
Definitely. So with the assessment center, we are working right now in progress, um, embedding that inquiry card to the assessment center as well. In case we get a student who is testing for any type of test, but they're not a student with us, they can become a prospective student with us as well. Um, again, I promised it was gonna be quick, so Registers Office, uh, our schedule view details have changed. Um, we have, uh, moved away from the coding that the students would be able to see, internal coding, to actual displaying of words so that the student can easily determine where their class is taking place. Is it at the main campus, at the south campus, is it a hybrid course, is it an online course? All of that has been cleaned out in detail. So if you go and look for a class, you'll be able to see that already live. In addition to that, in collaboration with, uh, Ms. Maria Lopez and the advising team, DegreeWors is already live as well. The DegreeWors is a degree auditing system. So you can go in there and take a look to see where you stand within your award, within your degree, so that way you know what comes next. So this is very handy for advising and for allowing the student to take ownership of their degree and know what comes next. Um, Veteran Services, so all of our accesses have been squared away. We had a recent transition in, uh, the Veteran Services Center and accesses were being a little issue, but now they're all squared away. And we are moving forward with cohort coding so that we're able to put full data rather quickly from our system so that we're able to tell you exactly where, uh, which benefit a student is obtaining, both the student and or the dependent of our veteran. And last but not least, in the Enrollment Management Office, we're working, um, definitely alongside with the rest of the offices. Scholarship Universe is running with with a collaboration from Enrollment Management and Financial Aid. We are also launching a true cost calculator so that in addition to the award letters, the student can actually compare side by side with the true cost of coming to the college is versus their financial aid awards. And they'll be able to see that there's a a very big, um, option for them to to come as in a very affordable institution. And last but not least, I know we just deferred our action item, but we're hopeful that we will get the CRM, um, conversation continue to happen so that we're able to move forward with the communication of the student in various different ways, which is email, texting, and all other capacities capacities that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Or Dr. Solís. Are we returning to offer the summer courses for our early pathway students like we did before in the past, and will we be offering also to our dual enrollment students?
The summer academy is being worked on, uh, will be part of the summer session once again.
Mm-hmm.
And in in person here on campus.
In person, right. And I also want to take an opportunity to thank, uh, the enrollment office. Uh, they assisted us with our career fair, our career job fair. What we did is we decided to do three days, and so we had a little bit of everything every single day else see. Uh, combination. Today was a STEM day. We didn't plan it. But actually, mostly participants were geared towards STEM. And so it was very helpful for the kids. Our freshmen don't really understand what a fair was until we presented it to them. So I want to thank the the staff because they each came in different dates, not all at the same time. And so the it was so much better the kids got a chance to go to the departments that they wanted to visit with, and we had the assessment there for the past two days, and we have our last one tomorrow. And we have even, um, one of the departments is the Bachelor of Organizational Leadership that will be available there presenting to our kids, because I truly believe that we need to start as freshmen earlier, probably like Dr. Carrance used to say, in kindergarten, but I feel that as a freshman, if they get prepared and they're ready, and our duos also get to know what's going on and how with the connection is to our college, they'll be better prepared. And I had great, um, um, great news from the kids. They're like, I really got this. I want to do this again. And then so tomorrow, we have another set of twenty-five groups coming in. And, uh, I'm I'm so happy that this has been offered to our kids. And I thank you for coordinating with us and, uh, making it happen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, remember, I'm so gonna be remiss if I if I wouldn't recognize the efforts of Julio, who was Director of Recruitment. Uh, he's actually the mastermind of putting these events together.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Dr. Ramírez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And and just to point out a couple of other things, the MOUs and the joint, uh, admissions agreements. Uh, we're actually signing one tomorrow with UTRDB, but in addition, we're working through Dr. Orasus Salinas to get some of these MOUs aligned. And so the the idea is that these universities are all going to admit our incoming freshmen should they choose to to fill out a joint application with the caveat that when they graduate with their associate's degree from here with a particular GPA, they'll be automatically admitted into the university without having to reapply. And so those those have been are are being worked out now and and, you know, through the effort, the joint effort of of Ms. Travina and and Dr. Salinas. Um, and so that that's working out really, really well. And you also need to to point out that the true cost calculator is required by law. And now it's just gonna take a more prominent location of the page because, um, quite frankly, couldn't find it, and there was no way to cost it. I mean, there was no, it was not a functioning calculator like it is going to be now or is now. And so there are lots of things happening. The campus tours are happening as well. Every week, we have at least one or two schools on campus, and so there's a lot happening. Um, I don't know that we're gonna, I'm hoping that we see all of the fruits of our labor by this fall, but I I guarantee that a change. Although I keep bugging them and telling them that they have to have a change by this fall, but for sure by next year. I mean, without a doubt, but hopefully this fall, we're gonna see a huge increase. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Next item is nine D, Board Member Travel to National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials, Naleo, Institute on Economic Mobility, Building the Infrastructure of Opportunity for Latinos. As per Laredo College Board Policies, BBG Local, Board Members Compensation and Expenses, and BBH Local, Board Members Conventions, Conferences, and Workshops. Ms. Jackie Laveramos and Ms. Teresa Van Ragenet.
Just for the record, Jackie might be called by eight, but and I got, I got, I got allowed to 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 go. They paid, they were gonna pay for it, but I already called it. I can't go. I have to. Thank you. Maybe go. My angle.
Just.
Let me ask you now, where would this, uh, particular meeting will be held?
Um. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos. So Naleo is a National Association of Latino Elected Officials, and they sent out text messages to invite individuals who are members of this group, uh, to see if they would like to participate. And, uh, they've approved the, uh, for a scholarship. So the college doesn't have to pay anything, and it's going to be in New York for two days. And so they mid, they tell us, we have to go, we have to be there, and if we don't show up, then we do have to pay them back for the flight and for the hotel. So this is one of the, uh, opportunities that came about and deal with economic development. The one in May that is coming up is dealing with board trustees for the school board and for the colleges working together. So that's another one that's coming up. So I invite anyone who is interested as a board member, uh, an elected official, uh, can participate, and they provide the paid scholarships for the attendance. And so it's a good opportunity. You network with other individuals, and so, um, this this would be my fourth, uh, uh, seminar or institute that I attend. So I'm really appreciative of the people that are making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next item we have is nine C, Letter of Support for the Micasan Twenty-four Affordable Home Project, Laredo, Texas, Webb County, District Twenty-Eight, Ms. Lupita Sepeda. And you all have a copy of the letter that, uh, was written up. Neighborhood Works of Laredo was making a proposal to Congressman Henry Guaya. It was short notice. It was spring break. And I talked to Mr. Mayor, and, uh, so we make the letter, and we submitted it because they they only gave me like two days to submit this letter. And I knew staff was all on, nobody was around. So, but I wanted to let you know that this letter was submitted on behalf of the board and Laredo College to the Congressman. In case you have any questions. Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. I'm forgiven for not having a meeting before. I couldn't. Thank you. The next item is ninety, Laredo College FY fiscal year, sorry, twenty twenty-four budget calendar, Mr. Sesavella.
Good evening, members of the board, uh, Dr. Ramírez. Uh, for the record, Sesavella, VP of Finance and Administration. Uh, just a quick update on the, uh, budget, uh, activities that, uh, have begun. Uh, we began the process back in, uh, March twentieth. We have, uh, opened up the budget module for all the for all department heads to start, uh, inputting their, uh, budget requests for next year. Uh, those activities will be, uh, ongoing up through, uh, Friday, April fourteenth. Uh, we do have a meeting, uh, scheduled or, uh, to review, uh, the, uh, TATV's, uh, salary recommendations for, uh, the upcoming year. Uh, that is scheduled for this Friday, March thirty-first. Uh, we should be getting that preliminary report from them. Uh, the bulk of the work, uh, will happen during the month of May. Uh, we have, uh, a set of meetings scheduled with the, uh, Budget Committee. Uh, when I say Budget Committee, this is the internal budget committee that, uh, has been assigned uh, by, uh, administration to review budget requests that will be coming in. Uh, we are tentatively scheduled to be meeting from, uh, May the second through, uh, May the twenty-fifth. Uh, also, if you look at your calendar, we have some, uh, items that are listed that are, uh, to be determined, and that it, that all depends on how much of, uh, money is available, uh, for revised requests. Uh, so that, uh, is right now is to be determined, uh, possibly, uh, during the month of month of June. Um, we are also work gonna be working during the month of May on preparing the the preliminary draft of the revenue and expenses. Uh, we do have tentatively scheduled, uh, budget workshop with the board for Thursday, May twenty-fifth. And I say tentatively because, uh, uh, that is all dependent on whether we have all the information and if the board can meet on that day. Um, I know that last year, we had that, uh, budget workshop, uh, the first week of June. Uh, and then we should, uh, activities gonna slow down. Uh, we will be pending to receive the certified tax rules. And those are, uh, protected to be received by, uh, Wednesday, July twenty-sixth. Uh, one other item, and that's not listed on the calendar, is, uh, state appropriations. Uh, those should be finalized by the end of May. Uh, so again, those should be coming in, uh, at that time, and we should have that information ready, uh, for that budget workshop. So we'll be, uh, providing an update, uh, at that meeting. Um, so again, tentatively, a budget workshop on, uh, Thursday, May twenty-fifth, and that is, uh, obviously going to be important because uh, we will be, uh, having discussions, uh, with the board on, uh, to see on direction on on the tax rate that we will be proposing, as well as any adjustments to salaries or other expense line, expense line items. Um. Again, um, once we receive the certified tax rules, uh, we are gonna have another set of, uh, items that we'll need to cover, and those, uh, will be dependent on the schedule that's provided by the, uh, Tax Assessor Collector. So, uh, they're not listed right now on the calendar, uh, but starting, uh, August, the first week of August, we need to plan on having a set or a series of meetings with the board. And that's all gonna be dependent on what the proposed tax rate is. So, uh, again, those, that calendar will be, uh, prepared by the Tax Assessor Collector, and we'll share that as soon as it's ready. Um, tentatively, we do want to have a second workshop, and this is just to present the final numbers before we present the budget for approval. And, uh, right now, we have it scheduled for August twenty-fourth. It would be, it would be the week before the board meeting. Uh, and again, uh, on Thursday, August thirty-first, uh, that would be the, uh, day that we currently have set to have the formal approval of the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, any questions on the proposed calendar? This one.
Chair recognizes the second solo.
Are we gonna have an opportunity to?
Are we gonna have an opportunity to disclose the salary recommendations before they are, uh, addressed formally in our budget?
Yes, uh, we part of the discussions that we'll have at the budget workshop. Again, also, again, that meeting we're tentatively scheduling for the, uh, Thursday, May twenty fifth. So at that time, we'll have that discussion, yes.
Thank you. But I think you'll have the TATV salary review as well, right?
Yes, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, that right now we have it's scheduled for this Friday, so we should be getting a report this Friday from them.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rengel.
Is this TATV report gonna include some of the recommendations that have been made in previous years past that include benefits?
Uh, it, um, right now, TATV, uh, will not be including that. Apparently they do not have the information from other, uh, community colleges to make that comparison.
Is it because they don't obtain it or they just don't wanna get it?
Uh, they, I believe they don't obtain it. Um, I can certainly ask that on Friday.
Well, it's been requested for in previous years uh, by several members of the board to have a complete, especially since they're spending significant amount of money on those reports. To make sure that they're actually complete reports rather than just half or half information provided.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll ask that question again on Friday. Uh, again, the, the challenge would be that they're not compiling the information for salaries, I'm sorry, for benefit, for the benefit packages. And there's, there's significant differences between institutions. So they're kind of, uh, 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 that's one of the reasons why they're saying, well, we may not be able to compare apples to apples, uh, when it comes to the benefit packages. But we'll ask that question again to see if we can get some information on that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Trump.
Mr. Vena. Can we ask them to provide us with what other colleges have, not necessarily to compare, but to just see, you know, are we in the same vicinity? Or are we doing much better? Or we're needing to work on the benefits? Um, you know, uh, even, even at that, I think it would be important to, to have that information provided to us. Or we can go online and, you know, look for it. But, but if we're paying them, they should be providing us with what each college within our same population and maybe the size of it. And we are classified as large, uh, you, uh, college. So they can tell us, you know, so and so is offering so and so. I mean, as an individual, if I wanna apply at different colleges, I'm gonna start looking at all the colleges and finding out what their benefits are. And it's over record. So, you know, I mean, I would, I would ask them, not necessarily comparison, but information.
Yes. And, and, uh, yes, we can do that. Uh, obviously, if TATV does not have the information, uh, we can certainly reach out to other institutions, either through, uh, TACC or the Courtney more to see if they have some information. If not, we can reach out directly to the different colleges and, and gather information. Uh, to have it ready for that budget workshop.
Chair recognizes the city solo.
And also I think it's important to compare ourselves with the private sector as well. We don't have to just focus on what other colleges are providing, right? Uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Kath mentioned earlier that, and as for, uh, Dr. Ramírez directed to uh, bring more faculty, um, members into our team. So it's important that we see what other institutions are offering, not only in the school sector, but outside, like for example, the county, the city of Laredo, UISD, ISD. There are so many different institutions that offer probably similar benefits. So it's important that we check who are they, um, who do they have insurance with, what other benefits they are offering. Not to suppose to do different ourselves to what other colleges are doing.
Yeah. So, so right now, uh, um, when we look at salaries, TATV is comparing salary schedules against the school districts.
But salary did want to.
Yes, on, uh, also the benefit package, uh, again, we can reach out directly to institutions to see if we can get that information for the comparison. Um, so that we can have it ready for, um, the budget workshop.
Cause I mean, it's not in some places of employment, the salaries are not that attractive, but their benefit packages are. So we wanna be able to see both, right? So, uh, we can make an informed decision. I'd actually encourage our administration, uh, to really look into the salaries of our, uh, faculty and staff because for, I've been here in this work for three years and they have made numerous comments regarding, uh, salaries. I know, um, the faculty center made a request to the board to look into the salary for the faculty. And, um, I know we did to the study, but I think we need to certainly um, look into that and have everything ready for that day.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rengel.
Thank you. And also, Mr. Vela, if we can, uh, on that note, um, how much money we spent on, 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 uh, contracting work uh, for anything, you know, from a clerk to a custodian or anything like that, that we could have those numbers of how much we've actually spent on, on all these, uh, subcontract.
Sure. We'll provide that information. And, and, and again, that will be part also of the budget. Uh, request, uh, contracted labor. Uh, so departments will submit the request for next this year. But we can provide the, uh, information for this year and, uh, what's coming in for next year.
Yeah. And then also how much we're planning on budgeting as well for those, for those contracts.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion and possible action. Ten A, Extension of Contract for Legal and for Tax Collection Collection Services with K. Semir and Betis LLC. This is Lupita Sepeda.
So, uh, Madam Chair.
One second. So I have a, a motion by Mr. Martinez to approve the contract. I have a second by Mr. Rangel and Mr. Elizondo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much, board member. Very much grateful for your confidence in us. Yes, sir. Thank you again. Uh, just.
Chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
Just for the record, do we have to say the number of years of the contract extended or is that?
Uh, you could say, uh, on the record, I think the motion was to approve the, the contract that you have in your, in your packet. But I think it would be fine to put that on the record as well. And, and I believe that the, the contract that you have in your packet does have a commencement date and a, and a ending.
Yes, it is. That was my opinion. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next item is ten B, Adopt a Resolution Supporting BA Forwarding Company, Inc. Application to Become a Usage-Driven Foreign Trade Zone, Number Ninety Four Designation. Located at one one two Ross Lady Drive, Laredo, Texas, seven eight oh four five. Dr. Minita Ramírez.
Yes, Madam Chair. It's been blocked with us by the city of Laredo when you look at your attachments. Uh, the board, uh, we recommend the approval of this resolution supporting BA Forwarding Company, Inc. Application to become a usage-driven foreign trade zone, number ninety four designation located at one twelve Ross Lady Drive, Laredo, Texas, seven eight oh four five. Uh, this is, uh, similar to the ones you have already approved. Uh, and in keeping with presidents of this board, uh, we are recommending approval.
Motion. So I have a, a motion by, uh, Mr. Elizondo. I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
So I have one opposed. So motion carries.
It's just for information, where is the Ross, uh, Ladies, uh, Road? I, uh, to be honest about, I have no idea.
I, I think it's the one by the trip by Delmar, right?
Yes.
The one by Delmar where the church is behind, instead of going, uh, westbound on Delmar, you go eastbound, right? Yeah.
That corner convenience store.
Yeah.
They have a facility and then further north of that, they have more property that they're developing. And so there's a little piece there that they wanted to, us to consider.
It's in the city industrial park.
Oh, by Interstate thirty five. You're right.
Yeah, it's a four eighty eighties.
Well, I, I, and all that, uh, of course are.
So it's all thirty five. I see thirty five, alright.
So those are your houses.
Okay. Next item is, uh, President's Remarks, eleven A, Campus Police Personnel Travel Reports. Dr. Minita Ramírez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in your packet, we've included an updated report from PD, which is a little more, I, I think reflective of the work that our officers are doing and uh, if there's no objection, we'd like to stay with um, this new kind of report that's, I think, more indicative of the work that they're doing. And a lot of the work that our, our officers are due every day is more service oriented to our campus community in supporting, uh, the campus in, in numerous ways, especially, you know, students or employees who lock their keys in the car or have a flat tire or who might be in need of a ride home or something happens. Um, they're always there to assist. Uh, they work very closely with Border Patrol on our border issues uh, at both campuses. And so that's also very refreshing and, and, and knowing that um, all of our employees and all of our students are protected at all times. Excuse me. Uh, so, um, I think unless anybody has any questions on that, we'll, we'll continue to move forward. Thank you. And then, um, in addition to that, uh, there are, uh, there's a new personnel report of all of the changes and, and the new updates that we've made to our, our personnel item. Um, Personnel Action, Action Report, uh, it's a summary from, from January twenty three forward. And so, uh, this is for you to peruse at your own leisure. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, answer them. And it's just January and February at this moment, so that you have a breakdown of, of what's going on. Um, also coming up, you, you have a list of things. Um, sometimes, uh, we get notification two days before that, don't forget, there's an event tomorrow. And so, um, so what we're trying to, to prevent from that happening is to give you at every board meeting what's coming up the following month. And therefore, that way you can take these home and, and put them on your refrigerator or on your nightstand or wherever. You can check what's going on at the college tomorrow. Uh, and, and know that you all are always welcome at our events as long as we don't have a forum. Because Mr. Muir will get very upset with us. And so, uh, uh, but I know you all can communicate in your own little groups about, uh, what, um, in, in your small groups. Each officer was told to have their own tree of threes. Oh, so, uh, so that you all can, can coordinate. I don't know if anybody has any, any questions. I do wanna point out something, um, that's going to happen tomorrow that I think is extremely significant. Um, our alligators are leaving. As you all know, uh, we, we've closed the LBB Environmental Center, uh, for renovations. And, uh, we found a home for our alligators. They're going to South Carolina. And they're coming to pick them up. It's a reptile home, I guess is what you call it, right, David? Um, and so, uh, they're gonna come pick them up tomorrow and they're bringing their trailer and everything else. And they're gonna take both of our huge alligators. And when our new environmental center is ready to be reopened, we're gonna get two baby alligators and start all over again. And so, uh, so that'll be tomorrow, I think, uh, two o'clock, somewhere around there. Uh, they'll be here and, and, and so then they'll, they're, they're going forever. So lots of things happening. I think everybody's really making a conscious effort, uh, of creating a more welcoming environment at both campuses. We do have, um, uh, an autism-supported awareness event coming up, uh, Saturday, April first. And then we have our kind of festival barbecue and I'm missing some car show uh, coming up in, in April as well. And so we hope that everybody can come join us that day. Um, it, it's gonna be an exciting, exciting time. Uh, on more of the administrative side, uh, Dr. DeSola and his team are working on, uh, I've, I've requested what's called a CSE and a FESI. The CSE is the, oh, remind me, David. There you go. Community College Survey of Student Engagement and a Faculty Survey of Student Engagement. Uh, so that we can have a baseline of, of what their perceptions are of the things that we're doing on our campus. And those surveys are going to take place in all of our classrooms with all of our students, uh, right after the, the Easter holiday. Uh, when we return and before finals, they're, they're gonna be given the, this survey. There's no right or wrong answer and we're hoping everybody goes one out and everybody submits it. And then it'll take the, the organization that we contract to do this kind of survey. Uh, we probably won't get results till about August, but that will certainly give us some good, strong baseline data. Because one thing is what we think, right? Uh, another thing is what do our students think? And, and how do we get their input? And, and how do we meet the needs of our students? And so, uh, hopefully everybody will, will be eager to take the survey because we do wanna hear everybody's opinion. And so, um, so that's coming up. I think that's a really big, um, big thing for us. Uh, we, we've also partnered, some of you have heard of Excedencia before. Excedencia is a national advocacy and, um, support uh, group across the country. It started by, um, Salida Brown. She's from Laredo. Some of you may know her. Started many, many years ago. Uh, they publish, they do research, they advocate for, um, Latino students across the country. And so we, they've asked us to partner with them and we have. And Dr. Devi Adiasola is going to take the lead for us. He will be our liaison. They had their kickoff meeting today. And so we should be hearing more from them and, and what our activities are going to be as that starts to un, unfold for the rest of this next year. And so, uh, I'm very excited about what the outcomes of that are going to be. Um, the, as far as, as, as travel and speaking engagements that I've had recently, uh, just, I just came in yesterday. I was at the Texas Women in Higher Ed Conference where I keynoteed on Monday. Uh, that was very well attended. We also had, uh, representing the college. Um, Miss Cindy Rodriguez, our, our Director of Libraries, who went with me. Uh, and she was fascinated with the whole program. It was wonderful. Uh, I'm glad she got to go because I think it, it it really, it was very inspiring, the, the, the leadership there and and the speakers that we had was, was excellent. Uh, Friday, I will be speaking at the University of Texas to the EDD students in the College of Education uh, about a life in education. And so that will be ID tomorrow. Um, and I will, that was asked to, to speak by the, the Dean of the College and, and so I agreed to do that. This morning. Thank you. This morning I was at Memorial Middle School for the eighth grader of the month as well. Uh, and the April is, is proving to be quite, uh, busy as well with, with all the graduations and scholarship ceremonies and um, at, at all of the different campuses. And so we're, we're really excited about, um, how well they've received our college everywhere we go. And so I'm very grateful and, and for the opportunity. Um, next week on April the fifth, uh, critical to all of us uh, is the House of Representatives will take up House Bill Eight, uh, which is our finance bill. I don't know if they're gonna approve it as it is. I don't know what writers they may attach to it. We have no idea what might happen. Uh, but Mr. Vela and I will be attending the session. We were asked by TAC to please be there. Um, and so, uh, we'll leave on the fourth in the afternoon and, and be there for the fifth. And then on the sixth, we have. And then on the sixth, we have, there's a possibility the Senate might take up the bill, and if so, then we'll stay for the Senate hearing, um, on the sixth, and then return in the afternoon, uh, on the sixth. Um, you heard about pathways and that's coming up as well, and so, um, there's, there's lots going on, or there's there's so much happening. Um, we are working on facilities and some of the construction projects that are going on. And, and Mr. Vela is on top of all of that and trying to make sure that we keep that going. Um, I did speak to the folks from the Imaginarium. We are still waiting for the elevator to come in. And so until that happens, we won't get that building released to us. And so hopefully next month, we'll, we keep, now we're being told at the end of April. I don't know. Every month they tell us the following month, so we'll see. Um, I think.
That's not gonna.
Chair recognizes Mr. DeGallo.
That holdup is not delaying any costs associated with the construction that's currently going on?
No, I don't think so. No, because it's not, it's not anybody's fault. I mean, everything else is pretty much complete. Um, we're, they, we are adding on the, on, on the back of, well, we're not. The Imaginarium is adding, um, like, uh, like a canopy, uh, that matches the architecture of the building, uh, which, uh, we all agree to, and I think that's gonna be very, a nice addition, but that's separate and apart. Um, and they're paying for that, we're not. So, uh, so that should be very nice as well. And I think once it's all completed between the Imaginarium, the environmental, the LBB Environmental Science Center, um, all of that will provide their community another reason for them to come here. We are working, um, uh, Doctor Solis and, and Doctor Vasco Salinas are also working, uh, with me on a project with UTRDB on the Starport. Uh, we're trying to get some, uh, of that excavated again. Uh, actually, we have a few border patrols that work out here that wanna help us clean that area up and, and try to create a pathway for that, and so hopefully at some point, it can become a, a, a point of destination in our community, and so to try to add to, um, what the historic value of our campuses, but at the same time to preserve the, the, the history of what the Starport was on this campus. And so we're trying to to work on, on different fronts and on different ends, and so, um, we will be, we're also working on emergency services and, uh, I know that our risk management team replaced, I think, almost every single fire extinguisher on this campus in the last month and a half. Is that correct, David? Right? And so we're, I mean, we're ta- tackling all fronts. Uh, and certainly, if you hear anything, please let me know. Uh, and we'll, we'll keep trucking along, and I don't know, did I give anything out? No. Yeah, the last but not least, thank you. Last but not least, thank you just for your kind words on the gala. Um, I cannot take credit. It was really a huge team effort. We had an incredible uh, group of employees led by, by Doctor Diana Ortiz and her team in development. We also had a group of, of our Laredo College U D women, um, that's what I call them. Um, Adrian Trevino and, uh, and Isabel Alvarez and my sister, Doctor Carmen Rathwell, and Vina Lamantia, and, um, who am I missing? Uh, Lisa Michelle Miller, Diana Laurie, uh, Melissa Cigaroa, uh, Anita April. Uh, these ladies are, are my personal friends, and they all stepped up and did their little piece. And so, but without Adrian and, and Diana, they, they co-chaired this event. They did an incredible job, and so we're very grateful to them.
Phenomenal.
And, and to our employees because, um, Mingo led the group there in the, in the Case and Center, and, and then our facility staff did an outstanding job. They really did. I mean, they painted walls and they took off. No, 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 they did everything that they needed to, and they find a place and they say, what have you been doing? I know, it's one of those things, uh, covers, right? Uh, but, but it, it worked and, and, um, and, and it just all turned out really, really well. Uh, I thank the business office, cause we've been handing them for checks and to pay everybody off, and so, um, we're very happy and very pleased with the outcome. So hopefully by next month, we'll give you a final verdict on, on, on the process.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martín.
Thank you. Uh, this, this subject was brought up in reference to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, museum, uh, where the alligators are, if I may call it that. The founder, I mean, I understand, has passed away. And, uh, I, I think it is only proper that we send flowers of whatever, whatever it is that, uh, uh, in behalf of Laredo College. Yes, passed away.
Um, today?
Today, I saw it in Facebook, by the way.
Jim Earhart, the, the, the biology professor?
Biol. I think you need to follow up on that, and, uh, in behalf of, uh, Laredo College, we all should, uh, send our condolences as well as, uh, perhaps, uh, flowers or, or whatever it else is proper in behalf of, of this, uh, institution.
He was my biology professor here in Laredo Junior College.
A hundred years.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're gonna do a special, um, event. Miss Professor, the one that, uh, forwarded the, um, the post.
The condolences to, to his family. On, on the calendar that you all had, there's a correction on tomorrow's University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, L O U. It said eleven, right? It says twelve.
Eleven-thirty, did this walk out? It said eleven or eleven or twelve? What time is that? It's at noon, okay.
Thank you. Uh, so you have eleven A, eleven B.
We're gonna forget.
Okay. Number twelve is the next meeting date is Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three at six P M. There'll be a regular Board of Trustees meeting. To have a motion. So I have a motion by Mister Rahel and Mrs. Ramos. I have a second by Mr. DeGallo. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.